Counselor Duggar.
I'm here.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Here.
Counselor Hussain is, um, sick, absent. Counselor Kimmy?
Here.
Counselor Teeter?
Here.
Counselor Tivnan?
Here.
Mayor Beatty?
Here. All right, crew, we got a busy agenda tonight. We're gonna start the day with visitor comment. We have two proclamations honoring Women's History Month, International Women's Day. We have a lofty consent agenda, construction review board, we have first readings of an ordinance, and a work session. Thank you to the scouts that came and visited city council tonight as you're working on your badges, but I will tell you, I was sitting up here listening to your questions, and I think you let my two colleagues off the hook a little bit. Like, what's your favorite thing? Duh, Beaverton, like, next time, come in with the hard-pressing questions. Yeah, no, you guys had great questions, thanks for being here tonight. It's important that young people see government work, and local government is the place that works. And so, no matter what you see on TV, know that your mayor and your city council are working hard for you guys. I recognize some of you guys from Sexton Mountain that go to school with my daughter, you see me at drop-off, so say hi. So, thanks for coming tonight, she's at lacrosse practice. So, young people rule the world. So, you can stay as long as you want, and when it gets too boring, you have my permission to leave, as long as your parents say it's okay. All right, we're gonna start with visitor comment, but as a reminder, visitor comment is an essential part of local government and how we do business. However, in order to help us comply with Oregon's open meeting laws, it's a time for us to listen, not a time for dialogue. But, if follow-up is required, the city manager, myself, or the city recorder will take your information and do that. We have three people tonight signed up for testimony. Uh, we have Alexa Paulson. Not with us tonight. Emily Stone. Getting easier and easier. David Witter?
I'll pass.
You'll pass? All right. So, with that, look at that, solved everyone's public comment. This meeting's been easy. Don't, uh, don't hold your breath, it gets better. Consent agenda, council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
There a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on tonight's motion? Um, I have one. And so, what you see on the agenda tonight, the letter of support for the Revolutionary War Monument. We had our, our favorite friend, David, in the back that came and testified last week. And just as a reminder, this is about supporting their application for their monument in Veteran Park. We have a three-way agreement for that park. The city owns it, THPRD manages it, but the American Legion is the oversight of the monuments for what goes in and the design. So, they needed an agreement that the, the monument would stay for 75 years, which sounds like a long time, but our other monuments have to be cared for that long as well. And Beaverton Veteran Park is actually designated an outdoor museum, it's the only one in the entire state because of some of the monuments. We also have the oldest Vietnam Memorial on the west, uh, west of the Mississippi is in the park, and so, this will be, um, an adding to that. However, when the city attorney and I were trying to figure out, when they asked me for a letter of support, I said, "I don't, I don't think I have the signature authority to agree for the city to do something for 75 years." I am pretty omnipresent, but I didn't think I could do that. There's not a lot of information about the park, but we do know the agreement is up, uh, relatively soon, within, is it 10 years? 20, 35? Uh, I would think that the council should consider having the city manager pull together all of our MOUs with THPRD into a master agreement and review things, so they're not in a one-off. And as a reminder, we had this issue come up with Elsie Store, um, and in the change of government and mayors and COVID, we, uh, they exercised the right to buy the park out from under us, um, because we weren't aware of the timeline. So, I, I would like us to, you know, consider asking the city manager to pull everything into a master agreement, so we understand, uh, all of our different obligations with THPRD. And with the long history of the park district, there are many, many agreements that are open and existing. So, that was my comment on that. Any other, uh, discussion on the motion? All right, see you in none. Will the recorder call the roll?
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Six, zero, one.
Okay, we do have two proclamations tonight. Um, I ask Counselor Tivnan to read the Women's History Month proclamation.
Thank you very much, it's my honor to read this today. So, a proclamation on behalf of the Office of the Mayor for the City of Beaverton, whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of Beaverton in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas, the following women have been elected and are currently representing Beaverton at the federal, state, regional, and city levels. Congresswoman Suzanne Bonamici, Congresswoman Andrea Salinas, Governor Tina Kotek, State Treasurer Elizabeth Steiner, Labor Commissioner Christina Stevenson, Senators Kate Lieber, Lisa Reynolds, and Winsby Campos, Representatives Desha Graeber, Mari Watanabe, and Farah Chichi, Metro Council President Lynn Peterson, Washington County Chair Catherine Harrington, Commissioners Nafisa Fai and Pam Therese, Beaverton Mayor Lacy Beatty, Counselors Ashley Hartmeier-Prigg, Nadia Hussain, and Allison Tivnan, Twelton Hills Park and Recreation District Board Members Barbie Minor, Felicita Montalvo Blanco, and Tia Ping, Beaverton School District Board Members Tammy Carpenter, Ugana Ananya, Sunita Garg, Susan Breenberg, Karen Perez, and Melissa Potter. And, whereas women have served and continue to serve in critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders at the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and whereas women have served our country courageously in the military, and whereas despite these contributions, the role of the American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now, therefore, on behalf of Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, does hereby proclaim March 2025 as Women's History Month in the City of Beaverton, and urge all residents to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities that honor the history and accomplishments and contributions of American women.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Tivnan. I write this proclamation every year because, as the first woman that served as the mayor of Beaverton, when I was elected, uh, the first time as a baby city counselor, that list was about three people long. And so, it, it is really important that my two daughters see themselves in government, that young people see women in these roles, and that list, uh, gets longer every year, and it makes me very proud to be the mayor of Beaverton.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I am now going to read a proclamation on behalf of the Office of the Mayor of the City of Beaverton. Whereas, International Women's Day celebrates the economic, political, and social achievements of women, and whereas women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, Pauline Lee, Melanie Marconi, Donna Muesen, Magda Moore, Amber Neves, Amy Sandoval, Lynette Scott, Lisa Wise, and Tammy Orba are current members of the Beaverton Area Chamber of Commerce Women and Business Committee, and whereas International Women's Day acknowledges the obstacles women still face in the struggle for equal rights and opportunities, and their central role in creating positive change. And whereas, according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, the median weekly earnings for women were 84% of what men earned for equivalent work in 2024. And whereas, women worldwide are still denied educational opportunities, with about 129 million girls currently out of school internationally, according to UNICEF. And whereas, gender equality in education and in the workforce benefits everyone. And whereas, despite these inequalities, women continue to make major contributions to our society, ranging from the historical victories of the women's suffrage movement to the current-day leadership in local, state, and federal government. Now, therefore, on behalf of Lacy Beatty, the mayor of the City of Beaverton, I do hereby proclaim March 8th, 2025, as International Women's Day in the City of Beaverton, and urge all residents to celebrate women's achievements, raise awareness against bias, and take action for equality.
Awesome. And I do have copies for the women in business, so we'll come out and take a photo, and while a little bit unusual, uh, since we have all the scouts here, if you guys wanna take a photo with the full council, we'll be, we'll be down there, ready to go. So. Okay, we are on to the first reading. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance. On March 18th, 2025, during a regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding an ordinance amending Beaverton Code Chapter 2 dot 1.1 relating to the city council rules and procedures. Uh, next, we have another first reading of an ordinance. On March 18th, 2025, during a regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding an ordinance adopting a new, uh, chapter of the, uh, Beaverton City Code, Chapter 9 dot 0.9 annexations. All right, we are on to our big, meaty agenda, the work session, Agenda Bill 25037, Transportation Issues Decision-Making Process. Who is the posse tonight? Guys, we could be outta here by seven if you like. Reel it in. City manager, we could be outta here by seven tonight, if my colleagues keep it together. I'm sure you do. Kevin definitely has 14.
You can start the shot clock now.
No pressure, we love to see, uh, public works and, uh, transportation come and talk to us, so.
I, I hope you've missed us as much as we've missed you. So, good to see you. So, um, we're here tonight, uh, as a request from council from last year, actually, to answer a couple of questions, and to, uh, for lack of a better word, to kinda demystify the process of how we go about in installing, making decisions, installing, and agreeing to transportation improvements, specifically in the areas of, uh, traffic safety. So, the two questions that we're here to answer tonight is, first of all, what is the process for addressing transportation issues? And then, when does the city have flexibility to deploy context-based solutions versus following state or federal standards? So, we wanna talk a little bit about the local control, when we have local control, when we don't have local control, what, what the national standards are, what the consequences are if we don't follow those national standards. And basically, we just want to talk about some of the changes in the past and coming in the future to everyone's favorite book, the MUTCD. And that is Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And with that, I'm gonna introduce Kara Hall, who is our assistant transportation engineer, or traffic engineer.
As Tim mentioned, we're gonna kinda start with the issues. That's how we make decisions about these. And that is really governed by... Thank you. So, that's Section 6.02, um, and I'm gonna talk about the kind of specific issues that it defines, um, but I wanna start a little bit with kind of the decision-makers that are called out in this process. So, there's three decision-makers highlighted in this section of the code. The first is city council, that's you all. As we talk through each of the different issues that might come before you, I'll be highlighting the, the key points when, um, issues might make their way to you, and the process by which they do so. Uh, the second is traffic commission, uh, so we'll cover their roles, and then the city traffic engineer, um, which is the staff member designated authority over transportation issues. So, we have five categories that are identified in the code. Um, and I wanna kind of start by noting that when we're talking about transportation issues here, we are primarily talking about requests that we get from community members and also sometimes staff. So, um, I'll provide examples, but at the highest level, that's something like, how do I change on-street parking restrictions on my street from a community member? Um, sometimes we get requests from the police. We're noticing that people aren't yielding to pedestrians at the specific intersection at this crosswalk, can we put another sign up? So, um, there are a variety of other transportation issues. You might think of things like a planning process, where we're looking at like a corridor-wide planning, or the transportation system plan effort. Those are following engineering and planning processes that have key touchpoints with stakeholders, with you all, with traffic commission built into that process. That's not what this presentation is, is focused on this evening. We're really talking about, we get a request, somebody's identified an issue, how do we approach that? So, as I mentioned, there's five, um, issues defined in this section of the code. Um, the first one is development review. So, these are transportation issues related to a development that's coming in. Um, it's shown in gray there, 'cause we're not planning to spend much time talking about that tonight. It's actually defined in this section of the code, uh, but there's no process for it here. That follows our land use process, um, and goes before planning commission, um, and decisions are made that way. So, while transportation engineering is involved in the review of land use, um, specifically the transportation side of things, uh, that's really led by, uh, planning. So, the second is a minor issue. So, a minor issue is something that is, um, implementing something that's already in code, um, or something that's already been approved. So, that would be something like, there's a curve here, and I really think we need an additional curve warning sign. Um, anytime we're just notifying people of the law that already exists, that's a minor issue. Major issue would be any change to how the system is operating, any, um, things like traffic calming devices fall under major issue. Um, large-scale changes to on-street parking, so if we wanted to prohibit on-street parking on an entire street, that would be a major issue. Um, if there were, uh, parking restrictions in place today and we wanted to remove them, that would also be a major issue. Emergency issue is really about the timeline for these, uh, getting solutions in place. So, an emergency issue would be used when something that is, um, identified as a major issue, that normally needs to be approved by a commission, uh, needs to be done in a more timely manner. So, say something changes, and we're observing a safety issue at an intersection, and we wanna make a change right away, that's gonna go under that emergency process, 'cause we wanna be able to do it in a more timely manner. Um, and then, extreme hazard is that kind of exemplified. So, that's something like, a bridge has collapsed, we need to close this road, um, there was some sort of construction issue, and we need to do it right away. So, those are the, kind of, the five that are defined, and we'll walk through the process for each, um, in a bit more detail here in just a second. So, before we get into that, I did wanna talk about, um, the criteria and standards that are included in the code. Um, so, the code has three standards and seven criteria. This is a summary of them, um, here on this slide, but they're really focused on providing safety and making sure that we're considering safety for all people in that process, considering the needs of the city, businesses, and residents, and how they interact with the transportation system, maintaining safe access and response times for emergency vehicles, complying with federal and state regulations, and aligning with adopted city council priorities and policies. So, these are really important, these are the criteria that any decision-maker in this process needs to be following. So, that ranges from staff to traffic commission to council, and that's a really critical aspect for making sure that as we're evaluating these solutions and looking at what makes sense from changes, we're approaching that with the consistent lens, and evaluating all of the, the issues that come before us, uh, through that same criteria. So, diving in for the first one, um, we have the minor issue. So, what I'm hoping to kind of highlight for you all here is the process by which we might learn about this, who's gonna make decisions, and how they get from that point to implementation. So, as I mentioned earlier, the minor request is going to be for something that has already, um, been approved or is already, um, the law. We see a lot of these come in around maintenance, so we'll often have signs that have fallen down, or, um, reflectors on the roads that have come up that we need to address and put back. Anytime we're doing that, um, staff has the authority to make a decision, um, and the requister, be it someone from the community or staff at the city, are notified of that decision. So, whether or not we're going to do something, um, or not. Another one that we see minor issue used for a lot is if somebody comes in and has identified, like, a sight-distance issue at an intersection. So, they're pulling up to a stop sign, um, they can't see around the parked cars that are immediately next to the stop sign. Because parking is prohibited within 50 feet of an intersection per the city code, uh, the city traffic engineer has the authority to restrict parking within 50 feet of an intersection. So, that's an example where we might use the minor issue. We're gonna notify the community member of that decision, um, and then, they have the opportunity to appeal. So, if they don't agree with the decision, um, or would like for that to be heard by traffic commission, uh, they can do so. In that case, it's gonna go for a public hearing in front of traffic commission, um, they are going to make a recommendation to city council, and then you all are, are the ultimate deciding, uh, group for approving, uh, that recommendation. If they don't appeal, uh, we are going straight to implementation. Uh, we will go out and put up the signs. Um, sometimes that can happen within a matter of weeks, um, depending on backlog and, um, how much we need to do to get those, those solutions, um, in place. So, the next is, um, a major issue. So, um, as I mentioned, this is the larger-scale on-street parking removal, um, or changes to it, uh, traffic calming devices. While that operates on the neighborhood traffic calming program, uh, traffic commission is kind of identified as the body that's responsible for making decisions around that. Um, so, there are a couple touchpoints with traffic commission built into that neighborhood, um, traffic calming program. This would also be things like restricting access at an intersection, so, um, or a driveway, so if we were to get a request from community members saying, "It's really hard to make this left turn, feels very unsafe," we might go out, evaluate it, make a determination. Um, staff in this case would ultimately be making the recommendation to traffic hearing, they would hold the public hearing, traffic mission, sorry, they would hold the public hearing. Again, this is another one where there's an appeal process. So, um, whether the community member or requister agrees or disagrees, they do have the opportunity to appeal that decision. Um, in this case, it's gonna be appealed directly to you all, since traffic commission, uh, was, was making the recommendation there. Um, if traffic commission approves it, there's no appeal, uh, it will come to you all for approval, and then it's going straight to, uh, implementation. So, on the emergency issue, um, as I noted earlier, this is really about the timing. This is something like needing to restrict a movement at an intersection for a safety issue has been identified, and we need to do it more quickly than going through the public hearing process, um, at traffic commission might allow. Um, the staff member that has the authority to decide that something is an emergency issue is actually the city manager, so that decision would be made, um, and we would then, uh, make a staff recommendation, in this case, directly to council for your approval prior to, um, implementation. On the extreme hazard, um, this is gonna be an example of something needing to be done immediately. As I mentioned earlier, something like a bridge has collapsed, and we need to close a road for some undetermined amount of time, um, or a construction issue. In this case, um, there are three staff members that can identify something as an extreme hazard, that is, the city manager, the public works director, um, and the city traffic engineer. In this case, it's going to go straight to implementation, and then there will be notification to city council after that. Um, this is intended to be something that is not permanent and would at some point be removed. So, we would be able to reopen the road, um, or remove whatever, um, had been implemented in that location. I do wanna note, both with this one and the emergency issue, we could not find a record of either of these two being used in the last 20 years. So, they exist, but they have not been used, um, historically. So, getting into part two, so the context-based solutions, and this is really aimed at, as Tim mentioned, highlighting when we're following federal guidance, um, when we have flexibility to, um, deviate for that, and then Tim will talk a little bit about, um, what the trade-offs of that might be, if we choose to deviate from that. So, um, when we start to think about, um, resolving some of these transportation issues that might come in front of us, um, there are a number of, um, different requirements that we're thinking about. Um, and they vary in context from being Beaverton-specific to the federal level. So, on the city side, that's the city code, um, that's the ordinances, uh, that included relation to traffic issues, um, that's the engineering design manual. So, this guides how we're constructing things in our public right-of-way. Um, if we need to deviate from that, um, we have a design exception process that allows us to do so. Um, and then the other one is the transportation system plan, and that really comes into play when we're thinking about, um, the functional classification of streets, who they're intended to serve, what types of facilities that are intended to be there. So, that would be a document that we would also reference in that process. So, these are all documents developed for Beaverton by Beaverton. So, they have the highest amount of, um, local context, and they're tailored to meet the needs and policies and the priorities of Beaverton specifically. Next, we're also looking to, uh, the state, so, both the Oregon revised statutes and the Oregon administrative rules, this is where things like the statewide vehicle code live, needing to make sure that we are in compliance with those. Um, speed limits are also something that's designated, um, in the ORS. Um, so, these are Oregon-specific, but taking kind of one step up. So, they're still aimed at implementing the laws and making sure that we're meeting the standards in Oregon, uh, but we're starting to lose some of that local context. And then, the last component is the federal side of things. So, uh, as Tim mentioned, that's the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, this is a federal document guiding, um, anything related to, um, traffic control within the transportation system. And then, we also have a PROAG, which is our Public Rights of Way Access Guidelines. Um, and this is a really important document when we start to think about how we're building transportation, um, infrastructure, because this guides, um, how we build facilities that are consistent with the standards in the American Disabilities Act. Um, so, another important component for us to be considering. It's at the federal level, uh, so we've kind of lost that local context a bit, um, but, but still important documents for us to be referencing. Um, because that is one that we talk a lot about, uh, we did just wanna touch, um, a little bit more on the MUTCD here. So, as I already mentioned, this is really aimed at establishing uniform national criteria for traffic control devices. It covers public streets, highways, pedestrian, bicycle facilities. Um, so, anything that you can travel on within the, the United States, this document is intended to, to guide how the traffic control devices, so that's signing, that's striping, it's the regulatory signs you see. Um, it is adopted by reference into the code of federal regulations. Um, it's also important to note that Oregon is responsible for adopting a version of the MUTCD, and they do that with an Oregon supplement. So, this- So this supplement is aimed at making sure that we have the necessary documents to reflect specific Oregon state laws. So a good example of this would be signage that you see in advance of intersections where traffic laws are enforced by photo radar. Oregon has very specific state laws for that and the guidelines in the MUTCD for signage don't match with the Oregon state laws. So they would adopt the supplement to make sure that the recommendations in there are aligning with the state standards. We actually have one of our senior traffic engineers that sits on the panel that review those supplements. So Oregon is right now in the process of adopting the new MUTCD. So the current version that's in place in Oregon was developed in 2009. In 2023, they finally got an updated version through and Oregon has until January 2026 to adopt that. So we're now in the process of working through that, making sure that we have identified all the supplements that are needed to align it with transportation requirements in Oregon. There are a couple of pretty big changes with the updated MUTCD. It includes kind of expansion of bike and pedestrian facilities. So this is something that's changed a lot since 2009. So a big focus of this update was expanding the types of treatment, things like signing, striping, incorporating like bicycle only phases at traffic signals, as well as expanding local context. So looking for opportunities to give local jurisdiction more flexibility in the process. We're tracking that closely. Like I said, that'll be adopted by January 2026 and at that point, we will switch and be using that version of the manual. Until then, we need to stay with the current state adopted version. Also really important to highlight that this document does include a process for options to experiment. So you're looking at a transportation issue you're trying to solve and you feel like the solutions in the manual maybe don't get at exactly what you're trying to achieve or you think there might be a better way to do that that's not consistent with what's in the manual. You do have the option to apply for an experimentation grant, basically. So you need to submit to the Federal Highways Administration what you're trying to do, what issue you think it's trying to solve, and how you're planning to do that. Once that's approved by FHWA, you can then begin that process. You can implement your experimental solution. You're just then required to regularly collect data, monitor, make sure that it is achieving what you're hoping to do, and report back to FHWA. One example of this would be in Southern California, a number of years ago, they wanted to paint the entire lane where they had the sharrows for bikes green to see if that would enhance the visibility and alert drivers that bikes would be sharing the lane with them. So they painted the whole lane green, had it in for some amount of time, and ultimately found that it didn't change driver behavior. So it was denied. It was not adopted in the MUTCD. A more local example of this is actually the flashing yellow arrow that you see on the traffic signals around here. So Beaverton was actually part of that experimentation process to get that adopted into the MUTCD and allow cities to be able to use that flashing yellow arrow. So examples of both that experimentation process leading to changes in the manual and also just finding out that it didn't actually achieve what we were hoping to and it being denied. But that is an option that you have within the manual. So the manual has a couple of different, well, four different ways that it guides decision making. And those range from support at the top, so that's the least stringent. That says something like, consider this when you're looking at different solutions. All the way down to standards, which uses the term "shall" and leaves the least amount of flexibility when you're implementing different solutions. So just wanted to provide a few examples here of what we might use this document to look at on kind of a daily basis if you ever were to find yourself in the seat of a transportation engineer. So the first one would be a question about should we install more traffic signs? Maybe someone would like to see an additional informational sign at an intersection or be directed to parking. We're going to look at the MUTCD and it's going to say, you should consider the number of signs that you might be putting up in a location and whether or not you might be overloading drivers with information. Somebody might request to install bicycle wayfinding signs, which is actually something that we've been working with the Bicycle Advisory Committee on. And we're going to look to that document to say, okay, what are the guidelines for installing bicycle wayfinding signs? This is going to say, you may install signs that provide distance information, direction, and key destinations. So in this case, we still have the entire decision making authority here. It's not telling us that we can or cannot do something and it's not even saying that we should. We simply have the option to do so. Another question we get a lot is if we can mark a new crosswalk. And if we were to look to the MUTCD, there would be guidance on this. So it would say, these are the things that should be considered when you're evaluating whether or not to mark this crosswalk. And it's going to consider things like the number of crossings, the volume on the street, speed, sight distance, how easy is it for people to see? And then the last one is can we install a traffic signal? So this is where we get to the "shall" component. And the MUTCD is going to say, you shall evaluate these nine different criteria for installation of a traffic signal and determine whether or not it is warranted based on those criteria. So these are a few of the examples. This is a very lengthy document, but just wanting to highlight that there are a variety of different guidelines from the MUTCD. And one thing that we're really focusing on is making sure that as we're bringing forward transportation issues to both traffic commission and to city council, that it's clear where we're at in this document and what the guidance from the MUTCD is saying. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tim to talk a little bit about the compliance piece.
So transportation engineering is an interesting discipline, right? Because it arguably is the engineering discipline that has the highest human interface, right? Because everybody drives down a road, everybody sees solutions that they think they can have. When you turn on your water, you're not thinking about how it's treated. You don't have the opportunity to interact with that, interface with that. Karen and I were talking earlier this week and I was reminded of my very first transportation engineering class when the professor came out and he started his lecture by saying, "The cardinal sin of any transportation engineer is to surprise the driving or traveling public." And so what that means is that consistency is very important. Some people call it boring, other people call it consistency. I prefer consistency myself because I'd like to think that I'm not a boring person. But so... So I think oftentimes the MUTCD is seen as the manual of no. And in some ways it is, but I would also like to say, it's also the manual of how do we keep the residents safe and protect the city from liability? So that means that if we put in a solution that's out of context in one location, it can function fine. But if we don't put in that same solution in another location, that it's still out of context and someone gets hurt, then the city could be liable because they didn't improve the issues in a level playing field. This actually, when I was in Washington, the state of Washington, the Washington County Risk Pool would give mandatory training to all elected officials and all county engineers at the time. And they had an example of a local city that did just that. There were complaints about an intersection and there were actually accidents that happened there. The city put in improvements in that particular intersection. They did not in a similar intersection. Someone then got hurt in a different intersection. The interesting thing that the county risk pool came in and said was that the MUTCD, if you had simply followed that, the city would have been protected from liability. Now, so part of what we do in the transportation engineering is, you know, it seems like, like I say, it's got the largest human interface and people are out driving it all the time, but it's also very, very complicated. Part of that is because you don't know the ramifications of your actions. So the people that put the MUTCD together along with the state advisory groups, they compile all of those far reaching implications of the solutions that are put together so that we don't have to suffer through some of the consequences of well-intended but poorly thought out or poorly implemented solutions. So it is, in many ways, the book of no. And that's not a fun book, especially when we want to have painted crosswalks with, you know, nice art in those crosswalks. And the MUTCD comes in, that goes back to the very first lecture, when it says, you don't want to surprise people. You want people, when they see a crosswalk, that they know what that is. They're not thinking that maybe it is street art, so you want to separate that. And those types of decisions. The good news is, as Karen mentioned earlier, that the MUTCD and the people that put it together also recognize the need for local solutions. And so that's where they put in, they're putting in more language of the "should" and "consider" rather than the "shall." And they're leaving that up to, more to engineering judgment. Again, it takes years. People will put years of becoming good at transportation engineering because even though it seems like it's all out there, it's very, very complicated. So engineering judgment is an interesting and important aspect of what transportation engineers do and how they make decisions. Part of those decisions that are made is, is it consistent? You know, one of the things that I do just simply as a public employee is whenever anyone asks me for something, the question that I ask is, can I give it to the next person that comes in? Our job, one of our jobs as public employees is to create a level playing field, right? Because it doesn't matter if you're in a rich neighborhood or a poor neighborhood. Our job is to treat everybody the same and make sure that everybody gets the same improvements. And so that's what we also do as transportation engineers, is to make sure that all of the solutions that we put in, to the best of our ability, are implemented consistently across the board. Now, what happens if we don't comply with the MUTCD? There are some cities that have chosen not to. There are some cities that think they're crosswalks, as a matter of fact. So what can happen, first of all, if there's an accident and a savvy attorney says that that's because this city didn't follow the MUTCD, then you're probably not going to win that lawsuit. The second, however, is that you simply are not able to provide the same services to everyone that asks. So Karen's going to talk a little bit more about how the MUTCD is changing and how local context is going to be implemented. But I just wanted to give a little bit of context on why the MUTCD, why is it the book of no? How does it protect us? What are our consequences if we don't follow it? But one of the things we also want to say is that we want to make sure that we're incredibly clear with council in the future in that anytime it's a "should" versus a "shall." So that council is very clear of that and that we're not just telling you because the MUTCD says it is if it's not a "shall." And then we'll also talk about some of the processes that we went through to develop the engineering judgment to bring forth the recommendation to you.
And then just one other side note on the compliance piece. Not being in compliance with the MUTCD can result in the loss of federal funds. So because it is a federally adopted document, if you're implementing solutions that are not in compliance, you can find yourself at risk of losing federal funding for specific projects or different transportation related pieces. So I did just want to take a minute here to highlight some of the additional transportation resources that we consult on a daily basis. As Tim mentioned, engineering judgment is a component of this. The MUTCD also relies heavily on engineering studies, so encouraging you to make decisions based on data that's been gathered. And there have been a number of resources put together by the National Association City of Transportation Officials, or NACTO. ODOT has guidance for a variety of different elements of the transportation system, the design process, school area safety, signing and striping, that we're referring to as we think about what needs to go into that engineering study? What are the things that we need to be considering and looking at? What do we need to be gathering data to understand? And how are we applying that engineering judgment as part of these decision making processes? So while there are these manuals that are adopted at the federal level that we are kind of holding to that level of making sure that we're in compliance and that we're following, there are a ton of other resources that we're also consulting on a daily basis that provide additional information on how to think about designing things or how to improve safety for people crossing intersections on foot or on bike that are also getting folded into that kind of decision making process. So with that, thank you for listening and we are excited to answer your questions.
Thank you for, in particular, the slide that stood out to me was "A Day in the Life." It was really good. And I really appreciate that it takes a lot of years to develop, what were you calling it, engineer oversight? What was the word you were using about knowing how to judgment? Really appreciate that, but I consider myself an expert in traffic engineering. Just kidding. With that, Councilor Tivna.
I'm not going to go on too long. I do have to say, I had an opportunity to work at a transportation engineering firm for three years in their marketing business development department. And so, yeah, exactly. Armchair by osmosis, have an appreciation for it, and that's as far as my expertise goes. But one of the things, the flashing yellow arrow, I worked with a colleague who was part of the team that was working all the way up the chains of command to try and make the case for why it's a solution to be considered. And it took over 10 years. So I understand it's a cautious process for all the reasons that you mentioned. I'm also really excited to see that there is some, like more innovation that's just happening in the last 15 years or so that I think is really driven by the speed at which we can get data. And now we're starting to see cars that are accruing data that can then be used to inform travel behavior, time of day, all sorts of different things and their interactions at key parts of the city because they're geolocated and all of that. So I'm guessing that there's never going to be an end to the engineering of how we get from one place to the other or the modes in which we take them. But having this level of understanding is illuminating to us, I think, especially when we hear from people in the community and your knee jerk reaction is to say, let's fix it. But what exactly does that mean to do that? The only question I had was really just a point of, just to get more clarity on at the state level with the statutes, the ORS statutes around speed limits. And so they, I believe you said at the state level, they set the speeds, the limits. But I've also seen municipalities change speed limits depending on just the conditions in certain areas of their city. So what does that look like when a local municipality decides that they either want to lower or to raise a speed limit depending on the scenario? How does that play out?
Yes. So there are statutory speed limits set in the ORS. And that basically says that for something like a residential street, the statutory speed limit is going to be 25 miles per hour. So ODOT is the one that is, per the ORS, has jurisdiction over setting speed limits. Now, cities can apply to have that power to do so within their communities, but there are a lot of risks and a lot of challenges with doing that. But say Beaverton wants to change our speed limit. For example, we just went through this process on Teal. We need to request an a speed investigation from ODOT. So we can reach out to ODOT, say we have concerns that the speed on this street is too high, and they will initiate the investigation. So they're going to go out and they're going to collect speed data. They're going to look at what the observed speed on the street is in comparison to the posted speed limit. They then have a panel that reviews those findings and makes the determination of whether or not that can be changed. So in this case, they reviewed the information for Teal and made the decision to lower it from 35 to 30 miles an hour. So that is one way by which you can request that ODOT review and make a determination on whether the speed limit should be adjusted. The other kind of way to do this is for... The other kind of way to do this is for, the state has designated the authority to change the statutory speed limit by five miles per hour on a non-arterial street. So that is something that in a residential district, the city can decide to change the speed limit from 25 to 20 under the current ORS. So it depends a little bit on where you're looking at and what the change you're looking to make is, but there's a couple different avenues to being able to make that change.
Counsel Hartmeier Prigg.
I have three questions, but I think they're short. So I'm curious, with the MUTCD, since we, since Oregon has to adopt by January of 2026, does that also mean that, like, any local code that we have about transportation also has to be updated?
Our code simply states that we have to follow the MUTCD as adopted by the state.
Beautiful.
So until then, we're following the 2009 edition of the MUTCD. That code's been written in such a way that when it's adopted at the state level, that will mean we automatically can change over and follow the new one.
Okay. Question, Tim, for you, around the liability that you were talking about? So in the scenario where, like, a municipality made an improvement in one area, but in another area that needed the same improvement and they didn't, right? Is the way to maybe avoid that, like, do you just have to do the improvements at the same time? Right? Like?
It, it would certainly help, without a doubt. If, if you are creating a solution that is outside of the guidelines of the MUTCD in one area, then you should do a survey of your entire city and see if there are any other, other areas that meet that same criteria and form that same solution.
Okay. I was just curious. And then my last one is, does regular street maintenance have to go through the same process? Or is there just, like, you're, you know, like, you've identified a pothole and you want to repair it? Like, does that have to go through, like, the minor flow? So there's, there is maintenance within, you don't have to go through the regulatory process because you already know you're meeting standard and you're, like, doing a repair or something?
Correct, yeah. We can go out and crack seal, fix potholes, we do that type of thing without going through any type of a process.
Okay.
The typical place that we kind of document it through this process is when it comes in from a community member. So if a community member's identified a sign that's missing, a sign that's fallen down, things like that, we mostly just want to document that that contact was made. We're going to follow up with them, let them know that it's been addressed. So as Tim was noting, if it's something that, like, our operations crew is noticing, they may just fix it, when it's coming in from a community member is typically when we're kind of putting it in that, that process.
Counsel Teeter.
Thank you. It's good to see you both, and Jabber, I see you back there. Thanks for coming, too. Got a couple of different questions. One was similar to Ashley's, about updating our codes after the state adopts its new MUTCD version. And you said, yes, we will have to update that. Is that an extensive process that will require, or did I hear that right? Did you say yes?
No, just to clarify, the code is already written such that we're following the adopted state version. So it says, follow adopted MUTCD by the federal and state.
Okay. I guess I was thinking of its impact on our engineering design manual and street design standards and things like that. Do we, does it affect that right away, or is that just part of our TSPR update?
Nope. We have that, we have that kind of written in the same way, and it just says, reference the adopted state version. So as soon as that change happens, we'll be able to start referencing that version of the MUTCD.
Okay, got it. I was worried that we'd have an extensive work process to get all that updated, so that makes it a little easier. I'm curious about how people actually report some of the roadway design issues that could be a problem. I know we've got traffic calming requests and report a, or report a problem page on the website, but if people see issues on their street that's not necessarily traffic calming, how do they let staff or the city know?
It is typically through the report a problem, so there's a public works option on there, and those make their way to us. So we do get outreach directly from folks that know who to contact about these things, but most of the kind of reported issues come in through kind of the city website and the traffic calming, as well as the, the broader report a problem.
Okay. I also ask personally, because, like, I don't want to reach out to staff about it, but working through a website or a process that a typical citizen would work through would be great, so just knowing the right place to do that is good. I also would love for us to look at how we can empower staff more to make more of these design decisions in the future without having to go through an approval process of traffic commission or city council. So in the future, if it's, if we're updating any of this to change some major issues that might be more minor, like parking restriction changes, like, this feel a little bit more minor, they feel like we could trust staff with those sorts of decisions. I think I'm, I'm just trying to think of ways we can simplify it a little bit and make the process a little smoother, because staff are the transportation experts, so I would prefer to make it flow a little bit more quickly. And I think that's all I had, so thank you.
What we learned from that is that 90% of the complaints coming in through the complaint email are actually Kevin Teeter, so. Counsel Duggar.
A couple of comments. First, thanks for this. This is, for us, this should go in the onboarding packet for new councils. I don't know about you guys, I get stopped a lot about this. If you've ever gone to a traffic calming meeting, this is super, super, super duper helpful for us, the context to have. Having said that, also, like, the shall designation, surfacing that to us is really important, and also explaining that in the traffic calming things, because I, you know, to your point, Tim, I, I've been a number of those before I was on this council, and it always was seems like a, a no document, and just having that context, I think is, is beautiful and is, is super helpful. From a question perspective, for the shals, right? So I'm thinking about the shall projects. Is this just applicable, the, the, the design standards and the decisions made at the time that, that the decision is made, or does that change in the future? So in, in example, one of the things that I thought about was, in Highland many, many years ago, they had asked for a four-way stop sign on 130th and Barlow or something like that, I can't remember. The, if I remember correctly, the manual said that, you know, you can't have that because there's different traffic volumes. I've often wondered, at the time, that was probably true, but do we ever, do we ever go back and look and see? Or is that simply a version of, like, we need an intake from a resident to, to see if that happens? Does that make sense?
Yeah, typically, those are, so, one, to answer your question, the criteria by which they're evaluated in the manual, those aren't changing. That criteria is, is there, and that takes a, a change in the manual to change that. But as you noted, traffic volume does change. So while we're, we don't typically go out and reevaluate without the request, if a request came in a year ago to look at an always stop at a specific location, if we get another request a year later, we do go out and we do evaluate, because the crash history changes, the volume has changed, the pedestrians, site distancing, things like that, those can all change. So every time we do get a request, even if it's something that we've evaluated, you know, in the fairly recent past, we will go out and collect new data and reevaluate that.
Okay. So it's just not something that happens automatically, right?
No.
Okay. And then if something moves from, in, in the, and I'm thinking the changes that are, you know, coming up right now, if something moves from, like, a consider to a shall, right? Do we go, is there an audit process for us to look at existing intersections or existing situations in the city, or is that intake-driven, right?
So most of the changes in the document are actually kind of going the other way. So they're getting less stringent. So they're not going from a consider to a shall. Most of what we're seeing is going from a shall to a should. There is, they do provide guidelines on when you need to be in compliance with, with the new changes in the MUTCD. Typically, that's several years, recognizing that, like, it's going to take some time to go out and, you know, if they're making changes to signs or things like that, to bring all of those in compliance. So that's something where, an example would be if they make a change to a sign we have on a corridor, when we're going out to do work on the corridor, that would be a good time for us to look at it and just say, hey, is all the signage or the striping on this street in compliance with the changes in the MUTCD, and to make those changes. If we identify larger-scale changes that needs to happen, that's something that we'll have to do some resource and workload planning to, to kind of take under, but that wouldn't be something that we're, like, necessarily leaving up to community members to come in through that process.
Yeah, no, that's helpful. And I, I kind of want to follow up on Counsel Hartmeier Prigg's question around the kind of changes from 2009 to 2026 on the manual. What if a project is in flight, right? Do you, the, our existing Beaverton code says you'll follow the code, but does that mean at the start of the project? Or, you know, if it starts in 2025, then you're following the 2009 code, but it might not finish until the middle of 2026? Do you have to redo that work, or do you, you know, if a change is applicable, obviously?
Yeah, it's going to be based on where it's at in the approval process. So if we've already approved designs and, and made decisions like that, we're not going to make a change right then. But we are referencing that manual, so it's been out there for a while. Like I mentioned, we have staff that are on the team that are reviewing that. So we are doing what we can to be kind of proactive about getting those changes incorporated and where there's opportunity for us to kind of be slotting that into work that we know is going to be kind of hitting that approval period after that. We are looking at, and at least trying to flag that now as something that, hey, when this is, when this is adopted, this is what we're going to be looking at in terms of standards.
Okay. And then my last is a comment. I want to second what Counsel Teeter said on, like, moving things from major to, to kind of monitor that process, to kind of free up the decisions of the, or the, the capacity of the traffic commission to really discuss some of the bigger stuff instead of a four-way stop sign. Like, that, to me, should be a pretty basic thing, you know, stuff like that. Like, I, any, any option we have to move, to be more efficient in that, that aspect, I think I would at least support thinking about what that looks like. So thank you, I really appreciate this.
Counsel Kimmy.
I'm sorry, Counsel Kimmy, if we're going to be out by seven, we're not going to have time for your question. Yeah. So I was actually getting nervous because I, I didn't want to go over seven, but thank you, Counsel Duggar, for, yeah. I have a full hour to work on.
[inaudible]
I have a few, I have a few. I see that emergency issue, you have to go through staff issue and the staff recommendation, council approval, implementation. What are the example of emergency issue?
So emergency issue would be something like, we've identified a safety issue at this intersection, and we want to be able to act quickly. It can take some time to get the documentation together for traffic commission, get on a traffic, like, notice that hearing, get on the traffic commission meeting, and then have to turn around the traffic commission recommendation for approval by council. So that can be like a three-month process.
Right. So that's our code, right?
Yes.
City code? It's not state mandated procedure?
Nope, that's city code.
So I was wondering, why can't we do that to extreme hazard? Where can the staff direction and the city manager can make decision on and report back to us? Just something to consider to make it, not three months process, but make it, like, overnight? Is it any legal ramifications if you do that?
No, those are, those processes are, are documented in the city code, so that was, that was a, a city decision, and that would require changes to the city code. That's not designated by state requirements.
But I just want to make, you know, efficiency, make quick decisions. If it's not going to be detrimental, it's not extreme hazard, then why don't we, why can't we do that with the city manager approval and then report to the city counselor? That's something I would love to see. Yes, Jenny?
You can. That would be a directive of the council if they wanted us to come back with some flexible approaches and modify the code.
Right. I mean, I, I think it's obvious. Why not? Another one. Sorry, we're going to go over a little bit. When you have a major issue like traffic calming devices or something like that we're going to put in, what is a possible turnaround, turnaround time if a problem I didn't report it to implementation, current state? If it's all going through approval process?
Yeah. So the traffic calming devices are, that's a bit of a unique one, because we also have the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. So for the traffic calming devices, what happens is, those come in, we get a request for traffic calming, it's automatically kicked to the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, which has its own process of evaluation, determining whether or not it's eligible, and moving kind of through that whole process. So that one goes to traffic commission at two different points throughout the process, and those issues take quite a while. That can, that's a year-long process typically, from request to getting projects implemented. Some of the other ones, something like changing parking restrictions on a street, that is more likely kind of in that three-month timeframe. There's less, we're going to go out, we're going to do a site visit, we're going to collect some data, but there's not as much process to that one. So it, it really varies based on the type of issue and what needs to be considered. Kind of traffic calming devices on their own, that's kind of a separate, unique one. On average, it's more like three to six months, depending on the evaluation and meeting schedules.
And you're getting a little bit ahead of us on traffic control, or on traffic calming, because we will be presenting that in your council briefings in this month, in March. And then also, we will be bringing back changes to that program in the future to lessen the time for implementation and to put in temporary implementation so that that can happen in a very short period of time, and then we can evaluate those improvements and then make those permanent later if they work as intended.
Thank you. I love to hear that, because, like, the last time when your intern presented?
That's what they're working on.
Yeah, so nine, nine procedures?
Yeah, that comes with, uh, council meeting.
Yeah, so, so I said, cut it down to maybe three, you know, that was, that was my suggestion. Why, why, why do traffic calming have to wait for a year or two to get there? Or can we get it down to, like, a month or two? I think that's, maybe it's a staffing issue, but if the procedure is shorter, then it's obvious safety issue. Last one. Yeah, thank you. MUTD, I know you're updating and supposed to be including pedestrian and bike, but when you're changing traffic calming or whatever changes that you make, you count only vehicle travel, right? They don't consider pedestrian or bike traveling. Is that new updated version somehow have some way to track that?
So the, so there are a number of bike and pedestrian treatments that are included in the MUTCD, the current adopted version. The new version, so the kind of 2023 document that will be adopted soon, just greatly expands that. And it does also expand the data that, that should be considered as part of those engineering studies. So there is more of a focus on looking at all the people that are traveling on the street when we're making decisions than has maybe historically been true in the MUTCD. So that, that is something that is, is an element of the updates.
So if it's updated, how would you track pedestrian and bicycle?
So just like we collect vehicle counts, we can collect bicycle and pedestrian counts as well. A lot of times when traffic counts are collected now, they're done, so they're done, it's done by camera. So they'll post a camera and they'll use AI to track and count both the cars, they'll look at different zones for pedestrians and bicycles. So both the manuals and the technology that allow us to kind of consider these things and gather data are evolving quickly. I think, as was noted earlier, it's a, there's a lot of change happening in that, and it's, it's greatly expanding what we can look at and consider as far as data points in the decision-making process.
Thank you. So is there another purchase that we have to make, or do we have the technology available to track it?
So typically, when we do that, we do it on a case-by-case basis, and we will often hire a third-party vendor to, to do that data collection.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you so much.
Counsel Hartmeier Prigg.
I just wanted to echo support for the ask, like, if it would help staff if we collapsed from four to three and give you, like, that efficient path, right? Because it, it's concerning to me that an emergency procedure could take as long as it does, if, you know, especially because it's probably safety-related.
Wouldn't the city manager's emergency authority override this timeline in the event of an actual road emergency? Her ability to declare an emergency and have things operate, can't she already do this?
So if it's falling under the hazard one, we've got the staff authority to just respond immediately and implement, and then notify council after. The emergency, it's maybe not the most, like, clearest naming, but the emergency is intended for something like changing access at an intersection or something like that, not like a tree has fallen and we need to, to close the road immediately. So the, the authority for staff to act and implement what's needed right away exists in the process as it is.
The city attorney has a look on her face that I can't tell if it's I agree or disagree, so go on.
I, I do agree that the current process does cover the extreme hazard in a situation that might present a problem immediately and a way to resolve it. And then to your question, Mayor, about the emergency powers, that's in Chapter Two of the Beaverton Code, I believe, and it's, it's specifically specified and outside of the realm of what the traffic code covers in Chapter Six. Now, if there was an emergency such as an earthquake that caused a traffic issue or something like that, like that's more the intent of your emergency declaration powers under the code.
Okay. So I think like she does have the authority to do things in the event of an emergency. And if we're going to rack and stack bringing code items back, this probably would not be on the top of my list. There's a lot of other things, but see, look at that. She smiled and looked down. That's what she was thinking. But I do agree, because I mean, we, we do need to have a comprehensive look at traffic stuff at some point. It's, is it more important than the other things? And if I was asking you to do rec right now, my, my preference would be traffic calming? Not this. But that's just one. And, and listen, like I know that I don't always give a lot of compliments because when I do give them, I want them to be meaningful and this is one of the best presentations we've had all year. And just the work, it's very obvious that you've thought about the, what we're struggling with and some of the things that are coming before us, the, the, the look and giving us examples and really understanding. So like kudos, Tim, to the team. Jenny, this is my level of expectation for presentations to us. I think this really did set the bar. So congratulations on that. We do have one last agenda item and I want you to be very careful before you put your name in the hat, Council Kimmy. Any council new business? No? All right. Boom, meeting over.